Getting ourselves organized. Thank you for coming. I'll call the meeting to order. Will call please.
Dr. Corleyan.
Here.
Mr. Graff.
He's here.
Yep. Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Dr. King.
Here.
Dr. Modra.
Here.
Mr. Morell.
Here.
Ms. Noye.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Palm.
Here.
Jennevee Blake and Jace Rock. Forum President.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure of taking this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, united as one with the living and dead, in all its parts.
Jim, please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law Statement.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public with advance notice to attend to meetings of public bodies in which any business affecting neighbor interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act, Montville Township Board of Education approved this meeting date. Notice of the meetings that pose problematic problems in Montville Municipal Building, while Montville Public Schools, Montville Public Library, Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, Montville Public School Website and advertised within Delaware.
Thank you. I see our high school student representatives are not here. We honored them and recognized them at the last board meeting. They are really two remarkable young adults. And I just want to mention that last night at the senior athletes dinner, the Mustang Senior Athletes Dinner, Genevieve Blake, who's one of our high school representatives, was not only honored as a senior athlete, but she was also selected for the very prestigious and coveted Student Athlete of the Year, Female Student Athlete of the Year. So congratulations to Genevieve. Okay, so on your agenda you see E2, which I don't think any of us here really want to do, but it wouldn't be fair to Dr. Freed to send him off without some recognition. So if you bear with me, I'd just like to just sort of recap what it's been like to have Dr. Freed here for the past five years. So you may know that tonight is Dr. Freed's last board meeting. He will be with us through the end of June when he's off to White Plains, New York. So really, what can I say about him? He arrived to the school district at a time when things were a bit turbulent. His easy, thoughtful manner quickly brought calm. He went to work right away evaluating what needed to be done in curriculum and facilities and personnel. His leadership style was collaborative and inclusive. He is a great listener and makes changes based on what those around him are suggesting if they're sound. To list just a few of Paul's accomplishments over the past five years, he's improved staff professional development, in particular in the area of differentiated instruction. He prepared the district and staff for the Common Core, PARC, and the new teacher evaluation instrument. He implemented programs and changes to improve school culture and climate. He brought us innovative programs like the original science research program, which has grown to include the humanities research program. He restored a world language program at the elementary schools. He created a task force to study world language in our district. He improved our music programs at the middle and high schools. He introduced enhanced special education programs to bring our students back to the district. In the area of facilities, we've made improvements to athletic fields and facilities. We undertook a joint effort with the elementary and middle schools to provide air conditioning in identified locations. We are undertaking a major renovation of our high school media center. We're making improvements to the high school auditorium. We've made significant improvements to the security of our schools. As important as the program and facilities improvements Paul has led, Paul's communication skills are outstanding. He became the voice of calm during Hurricane Sandy and its aftermath. He's improving the district website. He has conducted both open-ended and focused town hall meetings. We now have showcase programs and student accomplishments at board meetings. He has improved our HR department. Thanks to the creation of a district communications officer, the good work going on in our schools is more widely acknowledged. He has improved relations with our teachers union. In short, Paul has created an environment which allows for and encourages our talented and dedicated staff to grow and explore, and this ultimately has had a positive impact on student achievement. While it's a good thing to list all of this, it should not diminish the remarkable man that Paul is. He is a kind and thoughtful person. He believes in second chances and alternatives. As the board president throughout Paul's tenure, I've had the unique opportunity to get to know him well, and it's been a privilege. I have learned about his family. I know he is a wonderful husband and father. We have shared early morning and late night conversations. We sought each other's advice and valued that advice. Throughout the five years, I believe we have established not only a productive professional relationship, but a friendship, and for that, I feel honored. I know we're handing the reins to a talented and capable leader, but Paul, we're going to miss you. We wish you all the best for you and your family. So I'm sure there are others sitting on board who would like to make some remarks. And a little bit later, I will invite people to come in before we finish our recognition. So board members? Anything?
Karen, I know that having been alongside Dr. Freed for these five years, he's one of the most humble people you'll ever meet, so any kind words that are addressed towards him are sometimes difficult for him to listen to, but I'm sorry, Paul, occasionally you just have to get embarrassed. It's so hard to believe that the Paul Freed era in Montville is coming to a close. When we interviewed you a little bit over five years ago, I remember the board members that were there, a handful of whom are present this evening, talked about the need to reestablish administrative stability, create trust and respect and honor in the district again. And you felt in a very humble way that you could not only do that, but you also felt that you could create a sense of calm, help to create a sense of calm in the district. And you have created that sense, and you've done so by having clear vision, ideas and goals that you've driven towards and never let up on. And one of the things that I've said a number of times, interview personally but also in public, is that it amazes me how when you have an idea, when you hear the problem, there's always follow-through. You've always caught it, figured it out, and moved forward with it. And for an individual who has so much to think of, it's always to me remarkable that you could do that. But you also, as Karen alluded to, your communication skills, you were the voice of Montville at a time of need during Hurricane Sandy, but your task forces, your town hall meetings, the letters that you've written to the public, the speeches that you've given, the talks you've given, the emails you've sent that are so courteous and kind to other people, the genuine way in which you shake someone's hand, the visibility that you've had within this district, that is all, really, the sense of calm that you told us that you would create. You have changed the culture of this district, and I believe that's your legacy as you move forward. And I was taught when I was younger, about 10 years ago, that we all look at an event like this, losing you, in one of two ways. We can either be very upset, we're going to miss you and miss the person that you are, or we can choose to be so proud and feel so very fortunate that we had you, that we had you. And for these five years, Dr. Freed, it's been an absolute pleasure to sit here on the board, to watch everything that you have done for this district, and to value the relationship that you have with everyone, and I'll say personally myself too. As an individual, as a board member, I just say thank you. It's been an incredible five years.
You are the superintendent I've served under. And until you came here, I don't know that the board ever had total faith and trust in the superintendent. We trusted you from day one, and you've never done anything to make us lose that trust. Because as soon as you came here, it became obvious to us that this is a person who actually gets it, who actually understands that what we're doing is to do things for our district, for our children. And everything that you've done since you've been here has been for the best interests of the children, the district, and you've really been a father figure, really to all of us, even the parents of this district, hearing that calming voice over the telephone, the messages, the feeling that you really have been the leader of this district for five years. And I've made this analogy before. Some people are top-down leaders. I'm on top, and everyone else is underneath me. With Paul, I always felt that is more like a wheel. You've got the middle of the wheel, and the rest of the wheel kind of revolves around the center, but ultimately what he's doing is pulling everyone in and saying, "Come, join, kind of be a part of this." You've been inclusive, and I think your greatest attribute is that you've managed to get the best out of everybody in the district. I still have strong feelings about the political circumstances that led you to have to leave. This isn't the time to talk about this right now, I just want to say thank you for what you've done. You've been a wonderful superintendent, and I would be very dearly missed, and I know we're going to be very good hits in the future, but you've left your mark on this district, and you're always going to be a part of this. Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
I just want to say thank you for showing us what is lost.
So, John?
Can I ask a question? Now that you've heard all the nice things about Dr. Freed, I guess I might be one of the last ones to speak, and I'm sure he's very anxious to hear my remarks. But having been in education since 1962, which is, what, 53 years? I have worked, and I did this list with my wife at lunch today, I have worked with over 33 superintendents, both as a teacher, as an administrator, as an interim business administrator, and as a board member. And I must say, of those 33 superintendents, I probably have left one or two out because I wanted to leave them out, probably. But I think those administrators, several of them were very, very good, excellent. They have taken a district in turmoil, as Paul did when he came here five years ago, when the budget had been cut by over a million dollars, lost a day, really working with a bare-bones staff, very little support help. And during the five years that he's been here, we've been able to bring the district back, to bring the district back to the credibility from a program standpoint, to bring the district back from a cultural standpoint, and most importantly, to bring the district into an area that we can all be proud of. We're delivering an excellent instructional program for the kids, and as I always say, we're here for the kids. I can remember a short five years ago, taking a trip up to Marinerac, New York, to visit Paul and the district before we hired him. I went up 287, the easy way, and then coming back, I said, "I'm going to really wing it." So I went down to New York side and got lost. But the most important thing was that was a very worthwhile trip, because I think the four of us that went up there came back and shared those, that information with the board, and it was without a, it wasn't even a no-brainer. We were anxious to get Paul under contract, which we were able to do, and I think the rest is history. I would like to echo what my colleagues have said. I think that the district has moved along, and we must continue to move, because education cannot stop. We must continue to move, because we have an awesome responsibility for educating almost 4,000 kids. As a board member, it's been a privilege working with you, even though you gave me a lot of grief at times, but on a more serious note, I think you've been a very valuable addition to Montville, one that was needed at a very, very critical time, and I wish you nothing but success in your next job, and I hope you remember the Montville Board of Education, because I'm sure we will all remember you. Thank you for everything.
Is there anyone else?
I have just a couple of words to not pile on, but tonight's the night to pile on. Yeah, so maybe tonight's the night to pile on. When I came on the board, it was at the same time, actually, that Paul came on board to Montville. And like others have said, it was a time of crisis, and I remember sitting in the back of meetings and thinking, "Oh, my gosh, why have I done this? Why have I run for the board again now?" And there was really a sense of gloom that I recall, and immediately Paul put his head ease, and immediately it became obvious that Paul's priorities were the children and the level of education and the rapport with the teachers, which I think was in disparate as well. And there are times now when I think about leadership and management, and there are all sorts of managers, great managers, and I've had some books out there about what makes a great manager or administrator, the reality of it is that Paul is a natural board leader, and I think that you are extraordinary as a leader, and I think that's because you are an extraordinary entity, who has always cared so deeply about every single person that you're responsible for, from the children to the staff to the board members, and I think you have set an extraordinary example for all of us. And I thank you.
Okay, Paul, I'm going to ask you to come down to the mic, because we always give presentations at the podium, so it's no different for you. And I also like to invite our young colleague, Mike Johnson, to join you. So, Paul, just as though you were someone being awarded, just like anyone else who's receiving a special award, I wanted you down here. And Mike Johnson is going to present this to you because of his young enthusiasm and exuberance, it was his idea, and it gives me great pleasure to pass it off to him.
Thank you, Karen. Paul has sat right down, I know how much he looks surprised. And Dr. Freed, as you know, excellence in education, which means you're more than a script, extends beyond classroom, beyond field competition, to the more personal. And the truly brave districts are those that not only foster dignity, but sense of community, the very essence of which is not measured in knowing how things will look, or where people will be years from now, but how it feels to return to. And the Montville School District that I'm a part of today is very different than the one I left back in 2009. As a freshman at NTHS back in 2005, I remember saying, "You can't hide from Mustang Five as a daily occurrence." But in subsequent years, changes in leadership also brought changes in culture. And your arrival in 2010 marked a shifting in the tides for its stability. And today, I believe our students are well on the way to rediscover that spirit of Mustang pride through service, collaboration, and exploration under programs that you have been instrumental in bringing to this district. So, Paul, naturally, we commend you without making it abundantly clear that for all of your service in the Montville Township School District, you will always have a place here as a member of the Mustang family. So it is my great pleasure to present to you with this symbol, the school spirit and dedication, moving the lovely flag out of nowhere, that we hope will serve as a symbol of that school pride and a reminder of this community upon which you have had such tremendous power.
So, Paul, we also have for you a plaque. What a surprise. And it says, "Presented to Dr. Paul R. Freed." I bet you you didn't know what his middle name was. Take a guess. Raymond. "In recognition of your outstanding service to the children, community, and staff as the superintendent of the Montville Township Public Schools from July 1st, 2010 to June 30th, 2015."
Had to ship around.
If you'll indulge us, the board, if you could step down, we're going to take a photo. Are there any previous board members here? Sue's not only our director of education, she's an acrobat. So I had invited a couple of board members who served with Paul, they weren't able to make it tonight, but I did get a message from Jackie Richel, who's a dear friend. She wanted to be here, but she couldn't. And Paul, she specifically wanted me to tell you how much she thanks you for your five wonderful years of stability, growth, and reason. It's right from Jackie's heart. So at this time, is there anyone from the public who cares to make any comment about Dr. Freed? Otherwise, Paul, did you want to say anything?
Sure.
Get on with the meeting, Dr. Corleyan.
That's exactly what I'm going to do. Well, I want to thank our Seaview students for their patience and for sharing this time with me. It's very special. So, you know, this has been a long farewell, right? Because of the way, because of the circumstances involved in the, I guess, the time that I did let the board of education know I'm leaving and how all that kind of played out. But let me start by thanking the board of education for your thoughts and comments and I even, and just as importantly or more importantly, for all of your support over my five years in the district. When I tell everybody that I meet, when I tell them that I'll be leaving the district, whether it's people in the district to stop me if I'm buying lunch at Mary's or Joe's Pizza, or wherever it might be, or people in New York that I explain the situation to, I talk about the board of education and the support that I've had from them. And for people in the position of superintendent, that is an incredibly important and meaningful experience and thing. It's vital to the success of a school district that superintendent, the board of education can collaborate and work together toward the success of the children. So I do appreciate that deeply. And the community is very fortunate to have a board of education that is smart and well-intentioned, and there's not one person sitting up here who has a personal agenda. There's nobody here who thinks only about their own child or only about one particular area. They're really here for the right reasons, and the community should feel good about And I also want to, as Karen talked about, you know, the things that are my so-called accomplishments, almost every item that she named happened because of somebody else. The Human Resource Office with Casey Schroeder, our curriculum instruction with Andrea Woodren, our business practices and financial stability with Jim Tevis, all of our administrators, our building principals, the work that they do every day, and the care that they take with our children, all of that is what goes into making this an exceptional school district. And certainly, at the heart of it all is our teachers and our staff throughout our buildings, throughout the school district, who care deeply about the children, who are always looking to become better, who are willing to try new ideas and innovation, and who are helping move the district forward. So when people ask what I do for a living, I basically say I talk for a living, you know, and sometimes... You know, and sometimes between talking, I have a chance to solve some problems. And I think that if we're all just thoughtful about our work and respectful to others, then good things can happen. So, you know, it is very bittersweet that I am leaving the district, and I do want to thank our entire community, our children, their parents, and everyone involved in education in our community for all of their support along the way, because none of the, none of the good things that have happened could have happened without all of you. And I truly appreciate your support over my five years here. So thank you.
Karen, as you had passed on a message from ex-board member Jackie, John Allen had texted me earlier, and I just wanted to let you know, Paul, that John, who was past president for a number of years in this board, a longstanding board member, John says, "Please send along my best wishes for success in White Plains." Paul, you were the best we ever had by a long shot.
Okay, thank you. So, back to the meeting, and to the superintendent's report.
So, the next thing on the agenda, this is the life I lead, right, is the Violence and Vandalism Report. But this will be quick, and then we can get to the good part of the evening, which is about our kids. So very quickly, twice a year, we report on violence and vandalism, and our HIV, harassment, intimidation, bullying information. We share that, we also publicize it on our website, and so we will have this up as our report card, right, Dr. Schroeder, put it up there. And so, the report I'm about to give is actually for the reporting period for the first six months of the school year, so last July 1st through January 1st, were always six months defined in terms of the report. So in terms of total incidents that have to do with violence and vandalism, these are very specific categories, and Ken Nasdek at our high school, the assistant principal there is in charge of putting these reports together, so all of our building principals report reports to him, and then he compiles them. We had a total of 11 instances in that five-month reporting period, the five-school-month reporting period. Seven of those incidents happened in Monville Township High School, one of them at William Mason, and one of them at Woodmont, sorry, and two of them at Los Armines School. So that makes up the 11. They're in various categories, one of them happening in the cafeteria, three of them in the classroom, two of them in corridors, three of them on the bus, one of them outside, and one of them off school grounds, but it did have implications for the school district. Just for informational purposes, comparing this to the six months previous, we had 21 instances in the six months in the spring of 2014. So the fall of 2014, we had 11, and the spring we had 21, so half as many approximately. With regard to HIV incidents, we've had a total of nine. So that's not nine incidents total, we had many other reports, although not actually a lot, but other reports, but only nine of them turned out to be actual HIV cases. And they were broken down into six at the high school, two at Lazar, and one at Woodmont. So that's the total there. And compared to the six months preceding, there were 12. So we improved in that area by going from 12 to nine between last spring and this past fall. So again, this report card will be on our website if you want to take a closer look, and I'll ask the board if they have any comments or questions about it. Very good. So with that being said, our first presentation this evening is to recognize a very special individual for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, and that is Mark Evan Romeo. And Dr. Portolino, I would ask you to perhaps say a few words on Mark's behalf, and then to make the presentation.
Come on, Mark. It's really, it's always a wonderful evening when we can recognize and honor an Eagle Scout. People who are not in scouting, I think, may not understand the kind of work that goes into becoming an Eagle Scout. It's many years of moving through the ranks, from Cub Scouts to Boy Scouts, to Second Class, First Class, Star, Light, ultimately Eagle, but along the way, it's not just the rank advancement, it's the acquiring of merit badges, 20 merit badges, and 12 of which are specific, are required to become an Eagle Scout. And each one of those merit badges, and in particular the ones that are required for Eagle, are a lot of work. They have multiple parts, and within those parts, there are multiple parts. And with each, with each merit badge, with each rank advancement, scouts are required to do more, to exhibit more leadership, to take on more responsibility. Towards the end, as they work on their Eagle project, it's an enormous number of hours of work. They not only have to do the work, which can range anywhere from 90 to 200 or more hours, they have to document it all, they keep it in a book, the book needs to be reviewed, and all this process is very, it's very powerful to the young man, it's also a lot of work for him and his family, but in the end, it's all very rewarding. I do, I like to say that becoming an Eagle Scout is really a life's work, even though a young man may be only 16 or 17 years old when they become an Eagle Scout. And we must never forget the role that the mom and dad play, because as with so many things in a young person's life, the parents are a great influence on their son. And I know that from personal experience, that without a lot of prodding, pushing, reminding, sometimes the work, that's what the work needs in order to get done. So tonight, Mark, we have something that I'd like to come down and present to you. So it reads, "Whereas Mark Evan Romeo is a resident of the Township of Monville, and whereas Mark has attended the Monville Township Schools for 12 years, Mark is and has been a member of Boy Scout Troop 74 in Monville Township, and has reached the great distinction of achieving the position of Eagle Scout. And whereas Mark has completed his Eagle Scout project by designing and creating an overlook at the top of Camp Dawson, it provides an informational viewing center which houses historical information on the aquifer, as well as a view of the entire aquifer." And if those of you who don't know what an aquifer is, or what our aquifer is all about, should look it up, because it's very important to Monville. "The project also involved creating perennial gardens surrounded by mulch and the installation of a bench for climbers to rest and view the aquifer bowl below. He worked with the Environmental Commission and Historical Society to ensure informational and historical accuracy. The project took 190 hours to complete. Now therefore be resolved that the Monville Township Board of Education, this 16th day of June, recognizes and applauds the innovation, creativity, and hard work of Mark Evan Romeo. For the honor and distinction he has brought to his family, school, and community in reaching his goal as Eagle Scout." Congratulations.
Our next presentation is going to be done by our children from Cedar Hill School, and Dr. Portolino, a little while ago, talked about student presentations at board meetings, which has been very important to us, and has really showcased the fine things that our children are doing in our schools. So this is our last board meeting of the year, so this is very special, and so you're our last group of students to come before us this year. So I, excuse me, so I'd like to introduce Dr. Michael Raj, the principal of Cedar Hill School, who will introduce the teachers and the program.
Hey, Dr. Freed, members of the board. As the principal of Cedar Hill School, I am proud and honored to stand before you here and introduce some of our outstanding student leaders. We're gonna do two brief presentations for you this evening. Under the advisement of our parents, past and present, and we have some here today, Dr. Lundquist, Ms. Cramell, Ms. Cabola, and many countless others, staff members, and community members helped us achieve this goal. I am happy to introduce to you Cedar Hill's Character Education Committee and our Tools for Schools Committee. It's up to you. Good job.
Good evening, Dr. Freed, Dr. Portolino, and all members of the Board of Education. Hi, I'm Shane Harper, a seventh grader, and I graduated from Cedar Hill School in 19th grade. I've been working with the Character Education Committee for four years, a different weekly place. It really all began in third grade when I brought my idea to Mrs. L. I had it on a classical grade in Martin Luther Jr. She actually listened to my idea, and we did have, it was Mrs. L., myself, and her kindergarten class. She still has this grade every year. In my fourth grade year, I began working with the Character Education Committee as an associate, where I shared my ideas with fundraisers at the bank, through a vote, our main school. Mrs. L. and the committee made me project manager, and we had a change for change, we had a raise of our thousand dollars. I was able to assist in a few of the projects that year, and presented to the Board of Education. In fifth grade, I had the privilege and honor of putting a full member of the Character Education Committee, where I helped with many fundraisers, including baby twins birthday bash, a semen sale, and collecting items for Hurricane City vehicles, as well as other projects, and we had the honor of presenting to the Board of Education twice that year. September of my sixth grade year, I had the honor of being invited back to Cedar Hill School to act as ambassador for their character education department. Currently, I'm a consultant for this year's Character Education Committee. And I wonder what a consultant for character education is? Well, a consultant for character education is a really creative position. What I do is I help the fifth grade Character Education Committee, voting to decide on matters, as well share my input on decisions and fundraising ideas, and I take that responsibility. This job has been a curve in my path for a year. Our vision for the future of this wonderful and unique job is that I will have a more active role, as well as change responsibility, including helping execute children by assisting and mentoring opportunities, such as meetings like this, and guiding them in the responsibilities and resources that it comes. This will help us at realist efforts. Thank you, Dr. L., Mrs. Cramell, Mrs. Cabola, and Cedar Hill School for creating the Character Education Committee and for this opportunity to be with you. Character education has helped me grow and realize that I am seeing much more than I have ever did.
Hello, we are the fifth grade Character Education Committee for 2017-2018. My name is Brian.
My name is Olivia.
My name is Virgil.
My name is Austin.
My name is Sarah.
My name is Allison.
The Character Education Program was established in Cedar Hill School in 1990. This was a good little time for the State Department of Education, deemed character education a vital part of character. Cedar Hill administration and staff knew that it was necessary to provide guidance and support for the students in the city. Our program has come along.
Our program, Connected Respect, recognizes and applauds students who demonstrate the qualities of respect I need to hear. We are a New Jersey state school of character. Not only do we connect with respect on all levels within Cedar Hill, but we also reach out to the community and the world to show this respect. The Character Education Committee consists of 95th grade students, four parent volunteers, and 14 staff members. Our work has touched the lives of other students in Cedar Hill, community members of students in downtown. To reach out into our community, the Character Education students honor Monville and local veterans on Veterans Day 2014. The students for the Character Education Committee greeted their guests and escorted them into the media center for a luncheon. During the luncheon, flowers and posters were given to each veteran. Some veterans volunteered to speak with a specific grade level and discuss their military experiences. While the veterans enjoyed a delicious lunch, the military didn't wait in the bathroom. A parade of honor followed as men and women veterans walked through Cedar Hill, while students lined the hallways waving flags and holding their hands. An assembly followed that included readings, recitations, and singing. The children listened to taps in silence and then went on the art touring, without a sound, all 340 students. No one has the words to describe how we feel about the veterans and what they have done for us, but the witness children from the ages of five to 13 displayed such amazing respect through their sound and their game. Cedar Hill students are connected with respect.
Within our Cedar Hill community, the Character Education Board, Zach, the nephew of one of our Cedar Hill teachers, who has enormous medical bills because of his illness. Zach has had two liver transplants. The most immediate transplant caused Zach some clinical problems, and he became very ill waiting for the transplant. His high school friends stopped him to see for Zach, and met his name, Cedar Hill, even because we consider him a hero. In the fall, we had a pajama day, memories of Zach. Week lost, it was $300. Then, after holidays, we decided to make the World Tourers banner for Zach to cheer him on and cheer our support. Their entire school stepped out into the hallway and signed Zach's banner. The banner ran from the fifth grade wing all the way to the third grade classrooms. It took three dogs to wrap it up, it was so heavy. Zach got the most. At the Cedar Hill Fund Fair, the fifth grade Character Education Committee endorsed Zach's list to all students. Two for Zach, leaving more than each one. Children gave up by, between themselves, playing an extra game to join Zach. We made over $500 for Zach. To reach out globally, Cedar Hill children have adopted a student from the Airfield School about a half a mile. about a half mile. He provided for his academic needs. He does chores every day before school and completely respects. Afterwards, he goes home to help his mom to care by brothers and sisters. He inspires us to work harder. He also has an IAN product as a fundraiser, and have made more than $300 for our new brother on average. We conducted a reading on for Cedar Hill students, who challenged to read as many minutes of the hooded and as before pledges among friends and relatives. He made $2,500 for his work in the campus.
This year, we have been selected as the state school of character for 2014 and 2015. We also are the proud recipients of 2,000 character awards, one for our Metropolis Center Program and one for our Kansas Academy. We know that our predecessors worked very hard for these awards, and that we have worked very well too. We have gone to ride our university to accept the award, the real reward, is that we have helped others to help themselves to become the victory we are. In that process, we have earned a very fortunate, known, learned, and known, and know what it means when we say hi, everyone. Thank you. Ms. Pramel will now high up short video showing our family members of Zach.
Go Zach! We believe in you!
All right, here we go. Oh, it's Zach. Hi Zach, I'm Mrs. Harper.
I'm Shane Harper.
And I'm Juan Fernando Amanda, the film.
We are so excited to be a part of this today and motivate us, and we want to thank, and we hope that all the children today do the same for you.
Catch well, keep strong.
Super Zach! Go Zach! Hi Zach!
We are your 5th grade Character Education. Hi, I'm Maddie.
Hi, I'm Bryson.
Hi, Zach.
Hi, I'm Ash.
Hi, I'm Beal.
Hi, I'm Bryson.
Hi, I'm Olivia.
Hi, I'm Austin.
Hi, I'm Austin.
I'm Sheena.
You inspire us and many other people. You have come so far. You can do anything you want to do. Believe in yourself. We believe in you. Go Zach!
Dear Zach, we hope you feel better. Hang in there. Our class is rooting for you. Stay strong. This is the end of class.
Hi Zach, we are Miss Leia's 4th grade class. We have heard your story and seen your pictures. You are amazing. Keep working hard. We are all pulling for you. Go Zach!
Hi Zach, welcome to 3rd grade classes. This is Shwail Lassio, Mr. Galassio, and Mr. Swat. You've been an inspiration for our school. Everyone looks up to you because of what you have to do, and you truly are a great student.
And Zach, we just want to send this message along to you. The greatest pleasure in life is doing what others say you cannot do, so keep on doing all those things, Zach. Hi Zach, I'm Mrs. Work, and this is the 4th grade, and they have a message for you.
You are terrific! You are awesome! You are greatest! You are heroic!
We are the best of the best, so they are second grade, but we believe in you. We support you.
We love the good work, Super Zach!
Hi Zach, we are the Mrs. Dawson, 2nd grade. We are so happy to hear that you're doing well in school. We are happy you're not here away. Have a great day. Bye!
Who can make this possible happen? Well, we all hope you achieve the goals of that.
We have a special cheer for Zach from Mrs. Jordan, Mrs. Combs. Give me G.
G.
Give me O.
O.
What is it, star?
Star.
Give me S.
S.
Give me U.
U.
Give me K.
K.
Give me E.
E.
Give me R.
R.
What is it, star?
Star.
Give me C.
C.
Give me N.
N.
Give me C.
C.
Give me H.
H.
What is it, star?
Star.
The next child will take a hand dance for Zach. Go!
Hi Zach, you're learning at school for a fine A.
Go Zach! Go Zach, Super Zach! Hi Zach, this is Mrs. Lovey, and this is our 1st 3rd class.
Hi Zach, we are 5th graders, and we think you rock. You know that they work in college. You are awesome!
Stop, big Zach. The rest of the video is on the Cedar Hill Made webpage. Right at the top is the link if you'd like to see the rest of it. You can imagine us, a young man who, Zach is the nephew of one of our teachers, and he had three liver transplants, getting this video and the banner was really wonderful and uplifting for him, so please take a chance to look at it.
Good evening, Dr. Freed, Dr. Cordellino, and other Board of Education members. We are the Tools for Schools Executive Board from 2014 to 2015. Hi, I'm Sophia.
I'm Jackie.
I'm Nathan.
1998 was the year that Montpel Township and the Board of Education supported the efforts of Cedar Hill to make sure that the air, the soil, and the building itself were safe for Cedar Hill and all children who lived there. I was negative six years old. The Tools for Schools Committee attended a conference in Washington DC at the Center for Environmental Health and Justice, representing Montpel Township. The following year, Mike Origen, a 5th grade student, had joined the Tools for Schools Committee, and his family received a grant from the center, and he sat at the conference table and fielded all the questions about our environmental needs at Cedar Hill School.
From there, the Tools for Schools Committee created budgets, attendance, and spoke with superintendent about our challenges right here. Since then, we have visited the state regularly and recently gathered, asking the members and asking all the classes to come out and answer the questions of the leaders to come out and to talk. We tend to be transparent until the bill is passed.
Montpel Raj, day nine years ago, and so did the annual Valentine parade. Children made games from recycled materials, and the other students ran and ended with the play days. We have catalogued the environment around Cedar Hill School and our after-school programs. We have used reuse recycled, and last year, we made green barrels that around the end of the Eagle's Gorge Park, that'll help to flood the gardens around Cedar Hill.
What have we accomplished this year? We finished painting our ray rails, and now you can see those ray rails in action in the top of the gardens around Cedar Hill. Our barrels, exactly the crazy evil project, we joined together to create a beautiful tunnel of garden. Our mascot was also created this year in the event of the holiday. Just before the holidays, we had a good job, and we adopted an outfit from the David and Sheldon Trust. We collected over $300, and we announced the barrel to be offered.
And January was a huge success this year. Mrs. Work's class asked us, who have friends from the Paddy Leonard to guard the danger. We made over $300 on the third January, where we were able to send protective organizations out to Paddy Leonard.
This year, we planted a friendship garden. We named it Blue Plants, our people legend, with a master garden. It created a beautiful, clean, out of home and clean business at Cedar Hill School. It is very welcoming.
To make vehicles to thousands of students who have joined the People's Committee, and every year, the entire student body, staff, and administration support us. We would like to show you a video of our garden creation.
And this age, first we made a list. Then we consulted an expert and surveyed the area. Next, we drew pictures of our neighbors.
We needed a rank to clear the area. We consulted a media teacher about an outdoor library. Then we planned where to put the library plans, table, table, and bed.
Planting plants. Planting pots. It was important to learn how wide and tall each plant would grow. I don't know. We even had to remove a big root. Then we took a block and visualized where everything would be placed.
Next, we arranged everything for them. We learned that worms are good for the soil. We had a lot of parents volunteer.
The last step was mulching. We learned that cedar mulch was the best. Last, we thanked our mentor, Mr. Cordellino, and his son Willie. We're so excited about our new friendship garden. The end.
Before you go, don't run out quite so fast. I just want to thank all of you for being, first of all, for all the work that you do, and second of all, for being such wonderful role models for all of us, students and adults. We really feel proud of you. And Mrs. L., would you, or maybe Mrs. Pramel, could you just, like, really quickly explain the award that Character Education Committee just won at Writer?
Sure. I think my voice is loud enough. We have been past-
If you use the mic, though, it'll get caught on the video. Sorry, Mrs. Dr. L.
Sorry. For the past three years, we have been applying intensely for the Character Education Board because of the work that the children have done. We realize that they are not doing it for an award, and they are doing it to pay back and to say thank you for all of the things that they have. We say thank you to them for all of the things that we've had because of them. And we've had an honorary award for two years, and then this year, we received a state award for character education. That is a result of hours and hours and hours of work on the children's part. And teachers in turn, and parents in turn, especially parents in turn, helped us to fill out an application that would just knock your socks off. But the reason we could fill it out is because of these children and the work that they do. So we were invited to Writer, and we stood up on the stage, and we are the only district that brought the children, because it's the children that received the award, not the teachers. Forgive me, Dr. Raj, not the administrators. It's our kids. And they have worked so hard, and that's been since 1998, and they deserve this award. And next year, we're moving on. We are very satisfied with the state, but we're moving on for Nationals. I wish out of town. Thank you.
Thank you. It's so much easier, thank you. Move on to Mrs. Mysteries Report?
No report this year.
Oh, it's not a report, I'm sorry. Sitting here waiting for it, sorry. Are there any committee reports? I'm gonna just list a couple of events that have gone on since the last board meeting. There was the valedictorian-saluditorian dinner, where we honored our valedictorian, not saluditorian, of Montpel Township High School, along with the rest of Morris County. The science research program, but on their annual symposium, to use a phrase that Dr. L. loves, "They knocked everybody's socks off." They're just amazing and awesome, the way these high school students learn their material and are able to present it. Their presenting skills are amazing. Next, Relay for Life happened this week- Next, Relay for Life happened this weekend and, well, I'll just say that at the science research symposium, I know that there were other board members present. They can certainly comment. Relay for Life was also happened this weekend and I wanted to take the opportunity to just comment on how wonderful our facilities looked. It was a wonderful event, but our facilities looked great. It was a beautiful backdrop to this event and I'm very proud of our administration and board colleagues for sharing our facilities with the town. And I'd particularly like to thank Jim and Doug, principal of the high school, Jim Tevis, our business administrator, for the hard work that it took the two of you to have this event take place.
The Valedictorian facilities, they've done an amazing job.
Yes, thank you. There was also the Mustang Senior Athletic Dinner. You know, Mike O'Brien was there and Mr. Pig the Teller did a wonderful job of organizing that. He gives a blurb about every senior athlete.
I was there too Karen as a parent.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Matt has three children, two sons and a daughter. He was there for his daughter.
Only my daughter.
Only his daughter.
She's the athlete.
Listening to the attributes of the senior athletes, all I could do was feel pride within our schools and that the board would feel the same. And then the last thing I wanted to, well, two more things. Look, we received in our board packets literary, art literary magazine from Lozor. I just wanted to comment that it was amazing to read some of the children's work. I found the stories and poems both touching and moving. Some of them were quite insightful, some of them were very uplifting, some were sad. But it's really amazing work that's being produced by such young students. So I want to thank Lozor for publishing that. And I'll just give a very brief update. The board, a board committee, township committee on May twenty-seventh. And I held off giving this report because I thought there would be a future meeting before tonight, but there hasn't been so far. But Charlie, Matt and Paul were there. And just to give a brief update, some of the topics for discussion were the horse neck road permit parking, annual review. And I thought the township committee gave some good suggestions to the high school in terms of how to make that parking more efficient. We also talked about the board of ed's use of the township building, the DPW sewer and water on the river road facility. That's working out to be a win-win for both the board and the town. We also touched on an issue that has actually been a topic of discussion, included in our budget, school resource officer. We were surprised that at this point in time, the township does, no longer seems to have support for the concept. They had come to us with the idea originally, they approached us. We were just a little disappointed. We hope to have further conversations with the township so that we can bring this proposal to fruition. And hopefully, we'll be able to meet with them again in the near future. Are there any other committee delegate liaison or PTC liaison reports? Yes?
Finance committee met this Wednesday. Most of the items the board members have a copy of the minutes. Most of the items are on for official action tonight. The board will be receiving, the business administrator will be receiving bids for the high school library renovations. And it'll be a short special meeting on the twenty-fifth, I believe, six o'clock, somewhere in that range, to award the bids. You mentioned before about Relay for Life, which I think five of us were there. And I think a special recognition should go out to Terry Becker. She just left. Permanently or she coming back? Well, Terry just left, but I think without her efforts, it would not have been as successful as it was. I know there were a lot of volunteers, but I think that the money that was raised was outstanding. And I agree with Karen that I said the high school facilities, I was there for quite a while, a lot of comments about everything was first class. So I think we should be very proud of that and I know we will be next Monday and Tuesday for the middle school graduation and the high school. Hopefully, the rain will be done by Tuesday. But I think that we should all feel proud of what it looks like over there and what's happening in our school system. And hopefully, when we meet with the mayor and his, one of his people in a couple of weeks, that we will be able to finalize some of these other areas that they don't seem to be prepared to discuss at the present time.
Thank you, Charlie. Mike and then Mike?
Yeah, DAC, we had a meeting last Wednesday and I just wanted to reiterate to everybody that DAC obviously invites everybody at the board to come to project graduation and share a celebration with us. It's the longest running project graduation in the state. It's such a worthwhile thing because, you know, some places, you have the graduation, then you have the graduation parties and, you know, something, things happen at those parties and it's not always good things. We do this to keep the kids safe, to give them a place to go, a place to vent, a place to do some closure to their high school career. And it's a great thing. I really hope everyone has a chance to come out and at least look and see what our kids have to look forward to for their last notice high school students.
Mike, can you share with everyone where project graduation is and what time that begins?
Okay, it's at the JCC in West Orange. And as far as when it actually begins, I guess it kind of depends on what time bus gets there. In years past, it was usually more like about nine, then pushing the graduation back. So it's probably gonna be more like about ten, but it's kind of flexible. Of course, Michael's also a member of DAC, so I know he echoes everything I say. Right, Michael?
That's right, absolutely. And also, we have exciting news this year among us. The MTHS School of Rock will be coming back as top villain entertainment. Amanda Lust, better now better known as A Lust, will be coming back to lead the show. It's a wonderful night. It really is all about the kids. So we do ask the families in town, I've been there as well, I know it's a night, grandparents come up, the families in town. We ask that we give this one night to the kids. Let them have this capstone of their high school careers and enjoy one night with their friends. It truly is a wonderful night.
Thank you. Mike, the last night on the board?
Okay, Mustang, just a quick comment. They had their commuting on the June third. And I passed on the report to business administrator, some of the things I would discuss. Basically, it was getting ready for the year-end activities and of course, last night, I just wanted to point out, at the Mustang dinner, it was the start of the sale of the bricks. The bricks went on sale last night. So they're now available. You can get a form, I believe the forms are online, guaranteed. Forms available, you can buy half, brick, double size, whatever it is you want. So the sales have begun for that. Mustangs will need again.
Thank you, Matt. Paul, do you think it's possible for us to get a form under our board captains, could you guess, high school? Thank you. On other than, any reports?
What's that?
Just a pretty little bit for our client.
Great, thank you. And if there's no other committee reports, liaison reports, I'll put up to the public for items on the agenda. Items on the agenda.
I'm Terri Ann Moen, eight, three silver drive, nine foot. I just wanted to add my voice to thank Dr. Freed for always listening, for wanting to hear our opinions as parents.
Thank you.
I also want to ask, Dr. Cordino, you mentioned the township is no longer supporting the resource officer idea?
Well, they didn't seem to, yeah, is what I said.
Okay. And we did approve a half salary for that for the fall?
Yes, we did.
So- Do you see this not happening for the fall?
I don't know. I really- We're, we are-
So you are gonna meet over the summer and there's-
We will try to meet over the summer. We've reached out a couple of times and we're trying to set up a follow-up meeting. With them.
Disappointing that it's not. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
How are you? My name is Ken Mangano. I was here about a month ago on a joyous occasion.
We just need to know where you live.
I live in Montville, on Eight Rentrill Drive.
Thank you.
About a month ago, I was here for my daughter Joyce's occasion. She won a award for her NDF contest, if you remember. I'm not here for a very joyous occasion. My son in high school, Eels, one was viciously attacked about ten days ago. He was assaulted, charges are pending, took the fines in the school. The two perpetrators have been suspended for ten days. We're planning on, I guess, coming back. I don't know whether final decisions are being made. But, you know, as parents, as elected officials in this community, I think you may need to take a look at the video, the evidence of the action of these two students. I think stronger disciplinary actions need to be taken. I'm not gonna let this be swept under the table.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? Should be for items on the agenda, but since you're Boy Scouts, go ahead.
It is getting late.
We were talking, item F, superintendent's report on violence and vandalism.
Couldn't hear you.
Item F, please.
Yeah. Item F, on the agenda for the superintendent's report on violence and vandalism. So I had, I'm Justin Yang, I live at twenty-three, nine, two.
I'm Oliver, I live in Allen, at twenty-four, three, one.
I'm Alex Park, I live in nineteen, Bartlett Terrace, Champaign.
Thank you.
And we're, I have a question that, um, it's a question too, so. How do schools dealt with such issues and behavioral problems and how have consequences resulted actions in it in the terms of? Can you repeat the question? Sure. How do schools dealt with such issues as violence and vandalism and such behaviors? And how have consequences for them deter continuous and repercussions?
So we have a board of education policy. And each school has handbooks which speak to a code of conduct. And so based on the infraction, that's a guide for our building, our principals to follow in thinking about consequences for student behavior and for misbehavior. So you can check that board policy, if you go to our district's website and look under board of education, there's a place there for policies. So in terms of whether or not it deterred future problems, that's always hard to tell. We know that if we look at our, our society, right, our prison system, we find sometimes that even though people receive harsh consequences, they find themselves later on getting back into trouble. So it's difficult to say if a consequence then deters a future, future behavior. We hope so. And I encourage our principals to combine consequences with counseling and other kinds of things to help people change their behaviors.
Do you believe that schools are effective at informing the students that such behaviors are wrong?
Can you repeat the question?
Do you believe that schools are effective at informing the students that such behaviors are wrong?
I think they're trying their best. Again, whether it's effective is another question, but I think our administrators and teachers spend a lot of time helping students understand what's appropriate and what's not and also outlining consequences. I know that back to school nights, at parent meetings, at assemblies with students, there's lots of conversation. But as you saw tonight, we also have character education programs, which we use to help people understand that it's very positive to do the right thing, to help others and to, and hopefully, that helps people again do the right thing and not think about doing the wrong thing.
Do you think that schools are effective in deteriorating such behavior as violence?
Are schools effective deterrents?
Detering.
Detering. Detering, I can imagine. Again, like I just mentioned, I think that we're good at it. And I think that generally, in this particular community, we have very good track record. As I gave the violence and vandalism report before, we don't have a lot of cases. Unfortunately, we do have some. And I think that, you know, people, being people, will probably always, no matter what community we're in, have some instances where people do things that are unfortunate and do violent things. But I think generally, in this community, it is a very safe place and we have very few instances of that kind of behavior.
Just curious, are you working on your citizen and the community air band?
Thank you for your questions tonight.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Dinewell. I live in Trenton, New Jersey, and I represent thirty-two BJ. I'm a member organizer and I'm here to represent the Montville Food Sales Coopers.
If, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt because it's for items on the agenda. So we're just gonna move through our action agenda and then there'll be a second public participation. We should be done with that shortly. Thank you. Okay, no further public for items on the agenda. Motion for items O, I, group O, including-
Move the agenda and the agenda.
And the agenda.
Second.
Any question on minutes? Or any part of I? J? Group J? A? L? Ooh, okay. M? And let's see, I think there is an N and O. Any questions on the agenda? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, to all, stay on K four six.
Dr. Mudra?
Yes.
Mr. Noy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Cam?
Yes to everything with extreme deep regrets, L two, three.
Dr. Corley?
Yes, staying on K one, check number seven-nine-one-one-nine, seven-nine-two-nine-six.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. Any other business, additional reports, general board comments, any business? Mike?
I just wanted to be sure, I was asked in an email to remind those board members that are interested that the fourth committee invited-
that the fourth live committee invitation to launch. I assume maybe everyone got the email. It says it's on 6/27 at 1:00.
Oh, dear.
Every word changed.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Ken? So, I will open it up to the public for items not on the agenda, or any item?
Hi, I'm Lucille Salamando. I'm a food service worker for 28 years in Montville High School, as long as I've lived here. And I'm basically representing Montville High School cafeteria.
Okay, thank you.
My name again is Cheryl Dinewell. I'm from Trenton, New Jersey, and I'm here representing the Montville Food Service Workers. Representing 32BJ, SBIU, it's our local union here. Last time I was here, I did the packets concerning Pontonian and the violations that they had been found guilty of breaking the law from the National Labor Department. Here, just to say to you, Madam President, due to the email that was sent on 12th of May, we will respond as to getting you the contract from Aramark, which was the other contractor from last year, and also Pontonian's proposal package. We will make sure we're furnished with that. Also, just to let you know that we still have not sat down for negotiations with Pontonian concerning Montville and Springfield. They're sitting down to settle that. But the intimidation is still going on, the bullying is still going on. And in the packet that I left the last time I was here, it did furnish those offenses that was done to the workers. All we're asking for, and this is the message that we have been trying to send for, is when we sit down to negotiate, that Pontonian understands that the ladies are not asking for more than what they already received from prior year's contract. They're asking that that contract be honored, that they will get paid for their holidays that they did not get paid for, and the wages that they were supposed to receive for this year, they have not received. And the benefits that they were supposed to receive due to the prior contracts supposedly being honored by Pontonian, they did not receive any of those benefits and neither were they offered any as far as medical, dental, or vision. So the ladies are working under unbearable conditions. Who wants to work under things like that? You know, you want to come to work, you enjoy what you're doing. You want to know that if you get sick, you'll be able to take a sick day and get paid for that sick day because that's in your contract. And the question that I want to ask the board, being a fellow food service worker myself for 22 years, how do you go about choosing these contractors? I know the process of bidding, but is there any investigation that goes against to who you are going to take on as a responsible contractor? When those companies that are bidding, if they know that this district is a union district, why is it that a non-union irresponsible contractor has been chosen? Is it about the money? And that's what the ladies want to know. Is it really about the money, or is it about those children that goes to the Montville schools to receive those meals given by these, prepared by these ladies? And they've been doing it, as Lucille said, how many years?
28.
28 years she's been doing this. And now she's working under unbearable conditions and having to hide that on her face when she's serving those children. Generations have come through here. And now they're faced with these type of issues, and it's unfair and it's hurtful to them because they've never had to experience anything like this. So can someone answer that question? How is that process done? And then no one takes responsibility for it?
I'm going to let our business administrator answer that specific question. But I can assure you that any decision the board makes in terms of outsourcing, right, it's an outsourced service, just like our custodians and just like the bus company. These are not, you know, they're not our employees. However, we care about them certainly. But any decision that, I can speak to this board, and I've been on this board for nine years, I can certainly speak to the fact that there are many things that we consider in making our decisions. And oftentimes, oftentimes, it's not financially driven. What we care about are our students and people who work in the district. So I wanted to clear that up because certainly, decisions that, this particular decision was, was based on things other than finances. It was based on food quality and choices for students and things of that nature. It was not necessarily an economic decision. So having said that, I'll ask our business administrator to answer your, the first part of your question.
Sure. And Dr. Cortelino, you did sum it up, that is correct. We do go through an extensive RRP competitive process. It's actually outlined by the state of New Jersey through the Nutrition Services. We utilize that process through detailed specifications that are put out. And only companies that are registered for this particular work with the state of New Jersey are even allowed this medical proposal that I would consider and bring to the board with the recommendation. We only received a handful of actual companies that actually responded to the detailed RRP. But one of those requirements is obviously, what's known as a break-even requirement in terms of the financial position, because that's a state regulation. School districts, it's illegal for a school district now to operate at any kind of a deficit. We're not allowed to do it at all. It's against state regulations. So, you know, this is, this is something that we have to be very cognizant of, conscious of. And, you know, we brought the recommendation to the board that we certainly wanted the consideration. But as Dr. Cortelino said, it certainly wasn't the only one. We were looking at food quality, we were looking at changes for the students in terms of a healthy and more balanced menu, if you will. That was actually reviewed in the specifications. We had established a wellness committee that assisted with the review process of these specifications that had never been done before, at least in the history of this board. So it was an extensive process. You know, and one of the things that I have to ask is, what is it that you're looking for Pontonian to do exactly? What is it that you want Pontonian to agree to? What are you looking to have?
Well, we were looking for them to bargain in good faith concerning...
Well, they've been bargaining. I have the memorandum and that, and I've been speaking with them. But that's, that could be debated back and forth. I guess the question is, what document are you asking them to adhere to?
The prior contract with Aramark.
The prior contract. When was that contract signed?
That contract was signed the year before, well, not the year before, it was three years.
No, the last contract that you're asking them to adhere to. When was it, when was it signed? It was signed after Aramark's authority had left the district. They'd been informed that they're living in the district, and I'd already informed the board to bring in a food service provider.
Okay.
And that's a fact, that's a fact. And I think that that needs to be out in the public because, to be fair, okay, we keep hearing how bad Pontonian is and how they're not adhering to these contract stipulations. But I think it's important that the board and the public be aware that this contract that you're referring to wasn't signed by Aramark until after. They were notified by this business administrator that they are getting rid of.
Okay.
So that's, that's just another fact I wanted the board and the public with.
Okay, now you've said that, now Pontonian has been found by the labor board to have violated labor laws.
No, they haven't, no.
Sir, my...
I have not received any notice of that at all?
Well, that's what the panelists were there, for the last time I was here, put 11, now we need 12.
My board, our board attorney has not received any notice. If I may, as the board secretary, I would receive that notice legally.
We will furnish it to you. That would not be a problem.
More than happy to, and I would certainly give that to the board.
I do understand, but what I want to understand is, the process you've explained to me, how you choose
Correct, you are right.
Do you investigate how they treat their workers? Is that ever an issue?
Like, that's not my job to do that. I have a, that is the job of the contractor that we're hiring. They have, they have to deal with their own, you know, legal labor regulations and all that. We deal with something called PERC, not the public side, the public, or, but in the private, because this isn't really a private sector employer.
Definitely.
And I believe that's something for the national labor regulation there.
Yes.
And again, we deal with something called PERC. So that's not our duty, it's not my duty to do that, that has to be on the contractor's. Just like our certification or any of our other services.
I understand that. Okay, well, we definitely will furnish those things to you, so.
Thank you.
We'll speak at another time, email or what, what have you, you know, whatever we decide to use. Just, and just know that these food service workers, they would deserve better than what they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Okay, see none. Our closed public participation, entertain a motion to Charlie. It's Paul's last night.
Is Paul going to make the motion?
No, do we have to rush it? Charlie, motion?
Second.
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 John, second.